Being conducted on the Finance Committee earlier. So I call the meeting of January 11th, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask, may I ask Member Don Pachowski, ladies and gentlemen, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then if you'd be kind enough, everybody, to remain standing for the invocation. Member Pachowski.
(Inaudible)
Delighted to introduce our invoker this morning, Pastor Joseph Johnson from the First United Methodist Church from my hometown Elmhurst. Pastor?
I'm told there's an, oh, it's already on. All right. Good morning, DuPage County. Let us pray. Almighty God, in a world of change, you placed eternity in our hearts and gave us power to discern good from evil. Grant us sincerity that we may persistently seek the things that endure, refusing those which perish, and that amid things vanishing and deceptive, we may see the truth steadily, follow the light faithfully, and grow ever richer in that love which is the life of all people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
DeSart.
Here.
D'Ciani.
Here.
Eckoff.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Brenahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Shorzy.
Here.
Selman.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
Anze.
Okay, thank you. There's been a request to allow remote participation from Member DeSart and Member Selman under Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act. So pursue it to 7A. If there's a quorum of members physically present, a majority of the public body may allow a member of the body to attend. So I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion? There was a motion. There's a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Welcome, Member DeSart and Member Selman. We move on to the Order of Business entitled Chairman's Report. And as you know, today is the day that we are celebrating Martin Luther King Day because the official celebration is next Monday, right, Liz? But we like to celebrate it before it happens, since our meeting is today. So Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday will be celebrated on Monday, January 17th. As we celebrate MLK Day ahead of the official federal holiday, we call Dr. King's remarkable life and accomplishments. Here in DuPage County, we reflect on our shared goals of racial equality and fostering a community welcoming to all, of course. As you know, the College of DuPage partnered with us in 2020 on a year, a year full of activities to provide education and thoughtful discussion around topics of race. Today, I welcome representatives from COD to our meeting, Dr. Natanya Montez, the Dean of Students, and David Swope, the Manager of Student Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. They will virtually accept our MLK proclamation and tell us more about their plans to honor some exemplary students who embody the spirit and carry the legacy of Dr. King's work. I do have a proclamation, so we'll read that into the record, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the dean if she'd be kind enough to offer a few thoughts and introduce her student leader. So our proclamation goes as follows. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights and public service, believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all, and challenged all people to build, to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of America. And whereas in 1973, Illinois became the first state to make Dr. King's birthday a state holiday, and the residents of Illinois honor Dr. King's legacy each year on the third Monday in January. And in 1994, Congress initiated the King Day of Service, a nationwide effort to transform the federal holiday honoring Dr. King into a day of community service grounded in his teachings, focused on bringing together people, and breaking down the barriers that have divided us as a nation. And whereas, the celebration of Dr. King's birthday, which falls on January 17th this year, is a time for the people of Illinois to recognize Dr. King's teachings on advancing equality and opportunity for all by contributing their own time and talents in the day of service. And whereas, in the spirit of the King Day of Service, DuPage County and the College of DuPage partnered last year on CHAPS Unite Against Racism. They're called the Chaperaus. So, the CHAPS was short for Chaperaus. An initiative to unite the community against racism and provide a platform for meaningful conversation to help audiences reflect, share, and act. And whereas, this year, the College of DuPage welcomes the entire community to celebrate the life and legacy of Dr., Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. during a virtual event at 8:00 a.m. on January 17th on the college's Facebook page. And whereas, the College of DuPage event highlights how Dr. King's dream of equality impacts our world today, and will feature inspiring words from the College of DuPage community recognizing the efforts of staff and students who embody the spirit of Dr. King's work. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, members of the board, do hereby declare January 17th, 2022 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day and urge residents to honor the memory of Dr. King, put his teachings into action, and find ways to give back to their community. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Enacted this 11th day of January 2022. And I think, Dr. Montez, if you were here, I would hand this to you. We'll probably get some sort of technology pretty soon where I could be able to put this through some sort of mechanism where you could accept it. But thank you for all the good work you do at College of DuPage. I have so enjoyed partnering with you this, during the year when we wanted to come up with something meaningful, especially recognizing not only Dr. King but Juneteenth. And the College of DuPage is just a marvelous institution, and we really appreciate your good work. So please, Dr. Montez.
Thank you so much, Chairman Cronin, and thank you again for having us today and for the wonderful proclamation. It is my, you know, joy to invite all of you today as we celebrate the life and legacy of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We want to invite the entire community to participate in our virtual event on Monday, January 17th, starting at 8:00 a.m. and throughout all the day. All are welcome to share their comments on the COD Facebook page regarding how Dr. King's dream for equality impacts our world today. We definitely want to hear from you, and it is vitally important that we all join together on such an important day. MLK Day is an important one because it celebrates his legacy of service and his passionate and unrelenting dedication to racial justice and equality. The mere fact that we can all be together in this space today is a reflection of that legacy, and that is what makes this day so important, especially as we celebrate diversity, equity, and inclusion in DuPage County and at the College of DuPage. The COD Facebook premiere will launch on MLK Day with inspiring words from COD President Dr. Brian Caputo and various other leaders and students from throughout the college. We will also have an international student who will offer his insights regarding the worldwide impact of such a significant figure in our history. These offerings help illustrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s words when he once said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve." Thank you so much for your time and your attention to Dr. King and his life's work. I will now turn it over to my colleague, David Swope, our Manager for the Center of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. David?
Thank you, Dr. Montez, and thank you to Page County and the board for this time of acknowledgement and recognition. Before I say anything, I would actually like to invite a student representative who is with us, Noah Thompson. And he was able to actually take the call a little later in time, but he was able to join in, and I asked him if he would want to say a few words on behalf of the students. And so Noah, if you'd like to say a few words, we certainly would like to hear from you.
Thank you, Dr. Swope. I just would like to say good morning to everyone here, and thank you for having me here. It is an honor to represent the Black Lives Matter Alliance. You, Natalia Montez, I'm so sorry. You, Doc, I'll call you Doctor. What, she kinda said what I was gonna say. He was such a historical figure and for great reason. Like, his ideas of trying to bring more people together aside from race was, is really, really impactful, and he inspired so many people, like, that even some white people were even with him during the Summa of March. And from his hard work, look where we are. Yes, we have some way to go, but I think he has took us to a great step in our stride for fully acceptance into our society. Yeah, that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. That's good. Well, thank you. Dr. Swope, is there anything you'd like to add? David Swope, the Manager of Student Diversity?
Well, I just want to thank Natanya Montez and Noah for his words as well. At College of DuPage, our work is to build a platform of equity, of fairness, to build a platform where students have a voice, all students from all backgrounds and all walk of life. Dr. King's work is really rooted in the fight for equitable humanity for all people. I like Dr. King's work because it really challenged the narrative of America's Declaration and its Constitution. And he put those things to challenge in a way that would make America the land and the nation that it ascribes to be. And so he worked for fair voting rights and to mitigate poverty. He was an anti-racist visionary before we got into this contemporary concept of anti-racist action. And so Dr. King's work just continues to permeate, you know, where we are today. More than 50 years later, his voice still resonates in terms of aspects of American equality, of American fairness, of policies that speak for all people. And when I hear Noah speak, I can see that Dr. King's work has continued to impact this current generation of learners, and that's our work at College of DuPage. And so we don't take this as a day of vacationing, if you will, or a day of holiday. We take this as a day of service to continue the work that we do here at College of DuPage. And then we do that in ways where we engage our students. And so we were able to give away four scholarships this year, Martin Luther King Jr. scholarships, which we have been doing for years now at College of DuPage. And the scholarships are based on students that have academic achievement, that have civic and civil service work, and that write essays to express how the life and legacy of Dr. King has impacted their efforts in terms of their work to continue to strive for student success and excellence in what they do. And so we're proud to do that, and that work will be exhibited, those students, I should say, will be exhibited on the video that will be premiered on January 17th, where that information will be shared with our community, with our faculty and staff, and certainly to represent our students. So to everyone, we just want to say thank you for this opportunity. We really appreciate it, and we want to continue to partner in this work, not just on our college community campus, but with all of our community members as we strive to just continue the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King for diversity, equity, and inclusion at College of DuPage and in our community. Thank you all very, very much.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, David Swope. Thank you, Noah Thompson, and thank you, Dr. Montez. We so enjoy our partnership working with you. And again, congratulations on all the good work you do, and we think of Dr. King and all that we do today and throughout the year. So thank you very much. That concludes our program for MLK Day. Is there anything we need to do further? Anyone on the board have anything they'd like to offer? Well, thank you again. Appreciate it. We move on to the next Order of Business entitled, it's, it's entitled, it's, it has to do with the DuPage Airport Authority, and our friend Steve Davis is here. Steve has done a marvelous job as the leader, Chairman of the DuPage Airport Authority. And as you know, DuPage Airport is the largest general aviation airport in Illinois, and according to one recent report, it generates 1.5 billion, that's billion with a B, an economic impact and supports more than 5,500 jobs in the region. Chairman Davis joins us today with his report on the airport's operations and the goals that we seek to achieve as we begin 2022. Steve, please take it away.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. Hope you all are well and wish you a Happy New Year. I am very humbled that I have this opportunity to come before you. Everybody okay? Okay. All right. Good. I'm very humbled as I come before you today, and, and as, as you're celebrating the, the birth of Dr. King, a hero to me personally. Dr. King said, he was quoted, Coretta Scott was quoted as saying that, that Martin said there were four events in the history of, of black people in, in the Americas that were very important. One was the end of slavery, two was the end of Jim Crow, three, the civil rights movement of the early 1960s, and fourth was economic empowerment in our communities. And as we know, the fourth continues to be a goal, and, and I've kind of modeled my life to help address those issues. And here at the Page Airport, we, we are doing whatever we can. We're making those efforts as well. But if you allow me, this is probably about the fifth or sixth time I've had the opportunity to come before you, and it's always a pleasure, but this time I just want to read a couple of thoughts from my heart. Just, it won't take but five minutes. To Chairman Cronin and members of the Page County Board, in 2004, I was fortunate to be appointed to the Page Airport Authority Board. My appointment was under the leadership of the Page County Chairman Bob Schulstrom and the Page Airport Authority Chairman Dan Goodwin. I quickly understood my role and mission to run it like a business, show total transparency, and most important, to be a good tax, a good steward for the taxpayer. In 2015, with the support of Chairman Cronin and the County Board, I was elected by my fellow commissioners as chairman. I was the first African American in DuPage County history to lead the agency. My personal goal in any leadership position was to always, always leave it better than I found it, and that was what I was committed to doing. The DAA is the busiest airport in the state, falling only behind O'Hare Midway. DuPage is the home base to numerous corporate and charter flight operations, supporting businesses in DuPage County and across the entire Chicagoland. Continual capital investment upgrades to airport infrastructures have resulted in the longest general aviation airport in Chicagoland at over 7,000 feet. This runway allows our customers to operate anywhere in North America, nonstop to Europe and South America, and one stop to anywhere in the world. Since joining the board, we have fostered a pro-business culture for both aviation and non-aviation development, and uses to maximize the capabilities and the return to the citizens from the economic engine that is the DuPage Airport. Since 2010, the DAA has provided 3.5 million in tax abatements and 4 million in permanent reduction, reducing property taxes collected by over $7.5 million. We permanently reduced the property tax levy by 500,000 annually in 2012. The annual tax levy of 5.9 million is used for capital investment, safety, and security only, not for operations. The Page Airport continues to be debt-free, really important. Upgrades Suppraya Landing Golf Club, a compatible land use development to protect the airport, and increased land available for aviation development on the airfield, has resulted in a number-one ranking for public courses in the state of Illinois. We've had over 29,000 rounds played in 2021. The Page Airport has remained fully operational during pand, during the pandemic, providing facilities in support of the medical community with daily flights supporting both COVID and non-COVID medical issues. The Page Airport provided facilities resulted in safe distribution of vaccines to over 4,600 fellow citizens on site. Throughout the leadership of, of Executive Director Mark Doles, staff, our legal counsel, and our tremendous Board of Commissioners, the DAA pivoted from a stagnant proposed technology park development to a thriving DuPage Business Center, resulting in over $49 million in land sales, over $49 million in land sales, over 360 acres of development property, adding over 4 million square feet of private development building to the property tax rules. The economic impact, as the chairman mentioned, went from just over 300,000 and just under 3,000 jobs in 2006 to currently 1.5 billion and over 5,000 jobs, according to the most recent State of Illinois study. I believe the taxpayers' annual investment of 5.9 million dollars, returning 1.5 billion in annual economic impact, is a good investment. Personally, the most important project that I've been a part of has been the creation of Tuskegee Next. This nonpartisan endeavor is inspired by the legacy of our greatest generation, the Tuskegee Airmen. Their example of patriotism and love of the country is a model that we all should aspire to. The program was, was created to help reduce gun violence by providing opportunities to at-risk youth throughout our great county. I'm proud to report that after six years, we have successfully mentored hundreds of young adults. Many of these mentees are committed mentors now. In addition, 53 Stevens have earned pilot license. Forty-seven of 43, of 47 of 53 are now licensed pilots, and I want to personally thank you all for your support of this program. Now, after nearly 40 years as a resident of this great county, numerous show choir wins at Wheaton Warrenville South and three-state football championships, it's with mixed emotion that I actually, that I humbly ask this great body, effective January 31st, 2022, that you accept my resignation as Chairman and Member of the Page Airport Board of Commissioners. Understand that my only reason for leaving, that it's time. Rest assured, I leave it in good hands, and I can say without a doubt that I leave it a little better than I found it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is a special presentation with our, we have our two leaders in law enforcement here today. And when I say leaders in law enforcement, I say these are leaders. These are men, public officials, people that have been entrusted to define who we are in this county in, in a very difficult time, a turbulent time. And I can say, and I think I speak on behalf of the board, that we are so, so proud of the good work that Bob Berlin and Jim Mendrick and your team, teams do to keep this county safe. And, you know, Jim Mendrick, our Sheriff, Bob Berlin, our State's Attorney, I've been in frequent contact over the past month as law enforcement and prosecutors have been actively responding to some rather high-profile incidents. And, you know, I don't know about all of you, I think it's probably true, but everywhere I go, everyone I interact with, they notice what the difference is in DuPage County. They notice how we handle an incident as opposed to other jurisdictions in the region. And so as we all know, public safety is our top priority, and we are proud that this board has provided and remains committed to providing the needed resources to keep our community safe. Today, Sheriff Mendrick and State's Attorney Berlin are here to really punctuate what that means here in DuPage County. And I want to thank all of the sheriff's deputies, staff, and every law enforcement professional who each day responds to calls, protecting and serving our residents. I want to particularly point out some folks that are here with us today. I've introduced our sheriff that we all know and, and our State's Attorney, of course. But we are joined by the Crime Lab Director. These are, these are heroes, these, these women, these professionals, these. Claire Dragovich is with us, Denise Young, and Mary Dastick is here with us today. And we also want to make a note of Mary Margaret Greer Ritzheimer and Tamara Camp, who couldn't join us today but were very, very integral and very important part of that team at the Crime Lab. We're here to thank the entire DuPage County Sheriff's Crime Lab staff. These are heroes, ladies and gentlemen, and especially those who really stepped up over the Christmas holidays, working diligently and quickly to provide expert analysis. As Bob Berlin will tell us here, that evidence was a critical, critical component as his office worked to bring charges and pursuing million-dollar bonds that were set in those cases just days following the Oakbrook Center shooting. So I'm gonna read a proclamation, and then I'm gonna ask our guests to please make some remarks. The proclamation goes as follows. Whereas, on the evening of December 23rd, 2021, officers with the Oakbrook Police Department responded to a call of shots fired at Oakbrook Shopping Center shopping mall. And whereas, at the scene, police discovered four people suffering from gunshot wounds, and they immediately called for ambulances and began a pursuit of the suspects and evidence. And whereas, the DuPage County Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team, otherwise known as Merit, and hundreds of law enforcement professionals from local agencies responded to assist the Oakbrook Police Department in securing the crime scene, gathering evidence, and ensuring the safe exit of between 15,000 and 20,000 people. And whereas, as the incident occurred days before the Christmas holiday weekend, members of the DuPage County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab went above and beyond to assist in the investigation. And whereas, Crime Lab staff diligently processed evidence gathered at the scene and where, and gathered at the scene and elsewhere to, as quickly and accurately as possible, provide crucial information to law enforcement and to the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office. And whereas, Crime Lab Director Claire Dragovich, Analyst Denise Young, Administrative Assistant Mary Dastick, our DNA Analyst Mary Margaret Greer Ritzheimer, and DNA Analyst Tamara Camp are to be commended for working tirelessly through the holidays for their dedication and precise analysis in this case, and for the diligence they demonstrate each day as they serve DuPage County and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board and members of the DuPage County Board, do hereby commend and congratulate these members of the DuPage County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab, and thank them for their exceptional dedication to this community and express our sincere appreciation for their service. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. I can't tell you how much we appreciate the good work that you've done. I'm gonna come down and deliver this to you. And just thank you. May I ask another question? Well, thank you. Well, thank you very much. It's, it's great to be here with such an incredible team. I think everyone here probably knows someone or has a family member, or you yourself may have been at the mall in Oakbrook on December 23rd, two days before Christmas, when this happened. This is the type of crime that victimizes the entire community. It's not just the people who were shot. Everyone in the community suffers when something like this happens right in our backyard, which is why it was so important, not only to make sure everybody got out of there safe, but to hold those people allegedly responsible with criminal charges. 15,000 to 20,000 people, estimated, were at the mall that day, and within a matter of hours, our Sheriff's Office, our police departments, Oakbrook, and all the responding officers were able to get all of those people out safely. It's absolutely incredible. And then within five days, we were able to bring charges against two men allegedly responsible for this shooting. It doesn't happen without an incredible team, and we're fortunate to have an incredible team here in this county. Two years ago, we created Merit, the Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigations Team.
Two years ago, we created Merit, the Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigations Team. They've responded to over five hundred callouts, and this was a great example of all these law enforcement agencies working together. And I had three state's attorneys who were at the Oakbrook Police Department on and off for five days over the Christmas holiday. These are people who didn't spend Christmas with their families, but they spent it at the police department in investigating this case to make sure that our county was protected. And I have to tell you how fortunate we are to have our own Crime Lab here in this county. The work that these men and women do, day in and day out, is remarkable. And to get DNA from two guns that were submitted to the lab, to have that test started at six-thirty in the morning this Sunday, the day after Christmas, and have a report the following day, within thirty hours, is absolutely incredible, and we're so fortunate to have the lab and be able to get those results, which enabled us to bring charges, as Chairman Cronin said, resulting in the million-dollar bond. So this is just an example of the passion that all of us have for protecting the public. It's what this county does best, public safety, and I am so proud to be a part of this team.
First, I want to say, Chairman Cronin, thank you for recognizing what our staff has done. They're hard workers. They come out all the time when things like this occur. And, you know, what keeps DuPage County so safe is a deterrent, a deterrent that out here, you're going to have prosecution by the best state's attorney in the nation, as far as I'm concerned. But to have that prosecution, we have to provide evidence, and without evidence, we can't make a case. So the fact that we have a Crime Lab that is so professional, so scientific, they bring the testifier of science against people who can't be disputed. And to have a safe county, you have to have a mechanism like our DuPage County Crime Lab. This isn't the first time these women have done something like this either. Every time we get into a crisis, there are phone calls, because evidence is what we need to affect any arrest and to have successful prosecution. We can't have it without that. They provide us with these keystones that make our job successful. And let me tell you, it's a scary thing, because when the Oakbrook Mall incident started, you know, we're part of Merit, and again, I want to thank the Oakbrook Police Department and all the police agencies through Merit that responded, all the deputies at the sheriff's office. You know, the page came through, you know, we're all sitting, enjoying our evening, and then a page comes through, mass shooting at Oakbrook Mall, send, everything. When you get a police page like that, it's terrifying for us, too. Now, all these people, while fifteen thousand people are trying to run out, we're running towards, we're getting into this hot zone. And sure, that's what we're paid to do, that's the job. It doesn't mean it's not scary, it doesn't mean that we're not frightened to go into these zones either. Putting your life in front of, you know, your responsibilities, it's a scary notion, but we have to make those choices every day. But we couldn't do what we do, it wouldn't, it would be all for naught if we didn't have our Crime Lab, who, at the end of the day, we needed their scientific analysis to prove this case, and they did so. So with that being said, we are issuing a unit citation to the Crime Lab in its entirety. This unit citation is awarded to the Crime Laboratory for their speedy and dedicated work in response to the Oakbrook Mall shooting. The Lab went above and beyond to conduct crucial evidence processing, which ultimately led to the location and confirmation of DNA on both firearms that allowed for criminal charges to be filed. The dedication demonstrated by this unit is to be commended. And I personally want to say thank you once again to our DuPage County Crime Laboratory, led by Claire, for doing exemplary work in solving yet another criminal case.
Thank you. They're very humble, too. They didn't want to really have the spotlight shined on them at all, so it's, they're true public servants, and we really appreciate their good work, they're heroes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jim Zay, ladies and gentlemen.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
You know, as, as the state's attorney said, everybody was affected. I think a lot of people know, my son was at Nordstrom's that night, and as any parent, it's got to be probably the worst twenty minutes in our life, trying to get ahold of him and finding out where he was. And I want to thank the sheriff, because I didn't want to bother him, but I was in contact with Eddie Moore, who was by his side, and he reassured me everything was okay, and that we finally got ahold of my son, but I can't thank him enough to forgive me that reassurance at that point. So just want to thank him.
No, I think it's true that a lot of people, my son Danny was at Lifetime getting a workout, and I know there was hundreds, thousands of parents that were going through the same desperate time and moment. I was talking to a restaurant manager the other day, hardworking, single mom, she has a teenage son, and she couldn't get ahold of him for hours, and she was just despondent. And I know that there were hundreds, thousands of parents that went through the same experience. And, you know, I just think that, you know, there's also an important responsibility to have, you know, when there's an active criminal investigation underway, you've got to be mindful of the desperation that the people are feeling on the ground, and the difficult work that the policemen, the sheriff, and the deputies, and the Merit, and the police departments, just think about it, you know, thousands of people are moving out of all of these stores. They don't know if it's a good guy or a bad guy. And, you know, it's just really important that everybody kind of understands the magnitude of the problem and respects the folks that are on the ground, and makes sure that you respect the chain of command and how we behave, all of us as elected officials. So thank you very much, Sheriff, and thank you, Bob Berlin. We're so proud of those leaders and these professionals at the Crime Lab. I do have some chairman's remarks, if I may offer. There is an important item before you today, there's a number of important items here today, but on December fourteenth, you, you know that Judge Ken Popejoy, our state's attorney, Berlin, public defender Jeff York, they provided a detailed summary of their need to expand their workspaces and to make specific improvements at the judicial office facility. A resolution on today's agenda reserves ARPA funds to begin this critical multi-year project. In upcoming meetings, you will consider individual project contracts as funds are expended. I know I speak for Judge Popejoy when I reiterate that this plan was very thoughtfully developed, and, and I know that their board members were involved in this, all of you, and I know that the Judiciary Committee and a lot of folks had a lot of input, and there was, it's a very thorough analysis, but I, what I like about this plan is that it's also kind of, it's flexible. It solves today's space needs, and it provides some latitude and flexibility for the future. So please allow me to finally give a quick shout-out to our DuPage County staff members who work outside and plow our roads during the post-Christmas snowfall, during recent sub-zero temperatures, and our healthcare workers, care center, health department, jail staff. We appreciate all that you do, as we are confronting this latest and most recent chapter, and hopefully, one of the last chapters of this, this terrible pandemic. So we appreciate all you do. That concludes my remarks. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Public Comment." And we do have a few public comments. I have here a Susie Reyer from Willbrook that is seeking to offer some testimony here. Susie Reyer? Okay. We have next a, can't read the first name here, but it's Hewitt, Diane or, I'm sorry. Excuse me. He was a doctor, and he had terrible handwriting, and I could usually read his, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In any event, I'm just, we'd welcome you to the podium from the Lyle Township Democratic Organization. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Diane Hewitt, and I'm here in my capacity as Chair of Lyle Township Democratic Organization. I'm going to document the process you all did for posterity, because this is a case in point of how the county board failed on creating a choice of maps, and how the county clerk failed to get her homework done in a timely manner that allows public input. Look at Will County, they did a stellar job of equitably drawing their lines. They had eleven versions before they accepted it. They are saving taxpayer money by cutting board positions, and they had all their maps ready to go two weeks ago. That gives electeds, candidates, and the general public time to have input and make adjustments. I just spoke to Andrew Janik in the clerk's office, and he said the clerk's office will not have voter files until the end, likely the end of next month, if they were passed today. He doesn't know when the Arcus files will be public. Those are the technical files that you can make maps with. So apparently, the clerk's office, who have lobbied, literally lobbied Springfield to get this passed at the same time, wasn't ready for it when it happened. That's amazing. Now look at Lyle Township. We have literally been punished with these new maps. It really makes one wonder why. We have five forest-preserved districts, four county board districts, and eleven precincts with contested elections. Our municipalities were split. How is that possibly an accident when no other township has nearly the amount of districts? County board members in contested districts, precincts, are voting on the maps without recusing themselves. The clerk's office could have proposed a counter-county board map that would link the forest preserve in the county board districts. They did not. The maps that are being proposed are a super-flawed layer cake that we need to learn from so that the many, many mistakes are not done again. I'm asking that you all ask for input from the community before you make these important decisions. I'm asking you all to write a letter to your future selves of how you would do this next time. As someone who will use your maps continuously for the next decade, I am giving these maps a failing grade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We asked for Susie Reyer, is she now back? Maybe.
I, um, I am wanting, I just want to talk about freedom and what's happening in Cook County, in Western Springs, right, the town next to me. Someone once said, "The typical mask you buy at your local drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus." That someone was Anthony Fauci, who is going, his Senate hearing is at tinning this morning. This is why virologists wear sealed suits with a separate oxygen supply or do the smell test like our Sheriff Mendrick. Someone also once said, "Let us then turn this government back into the channel in which the framers of the Constitution originally placed it." That was Lincoln in nineteen, eighteen fifty-eight in Chicago. I'm here because local and federal governments aren't doing their jobs. I'm here because in one county over, you're required to have a jab passport to walk into a restaurant. That's in Western Springs in DuPage County, in La Grange, and they have to come over to DuPage now to go to the grocery store. Do any, do any, I'm sorry, this virus now, the Omnicron, is a common cold, and that's on the CDC website. It's two-two-nine E. That is considered the cold. I hope you all see where this is going. I have a handicapped brother that attends Ray Graham, and he is not allowed to go back in his program because he can't wear a mask. That is against the ADA. Why isn't the ADA holding up? This is local, then we have federal. What is, what's going on? My parents are seventy-eight and seventy-five years old, and they are on eggshells to try to get Brett back into his program, and I just think it's absolutely criminal. And what they're doing to the residential Ray Graham kids are just locking them in and jabbing them on their third, fourth booster. So it's getting really hard in my, in my family right now, all for a virus which still has a ninety-nine-point-nine survival rate. Where is the ADA? Mask and jab passports only create separation and segregation. You are treading on a very slippery slope. My child can't even go to school because of these masks and these jabs. We are taking, this is not a lob, these are guidelines from a governor? Well, I'll just let you figure out the irony there, in health. This is still America, and this is a war on humanity. This is good versus evil. And I really hope you all pick the right side of this war, because there's an election soon, after they rezone everything again, and not sure what's going on that, but we are, I think we all want the same thing, and that is the freedom to choose if we mask or if we don't mask. There are no, there's no studies, even CNN is reporting, that it does not, they don't do anything. They do nothing but bring on the pneumonia and bring on the sickness. I hope to see, I hope that every one of you is voting against this tyranny, because it really only seems like Sheriff Mendrick is the only one working for the people these days. And I want to remind you, you work for the people. Thank you.
Claire Goldenberg?
Hello, my name is Claire Goldenberg, and I wanted to talk about the PC maps, and that I just wanted to, I know you guys are going to vote on this again next Friday, and I believe that if you are an elected county board member and you are in a district with a contested PC, that you should recuse yourselves. I don't have all the mapping, I can't pinpoint which one of you, which one of yous that would pertain to, but I do know that Paula Garcia is in one of those districts, and so that I would ask that she recuse herself from voting on that, on those maps on Friday. I have been a PC for four years now. I've worked very hard to get several of you elected, and I hope that I would be able to continue that work in the future. It is difficult as just a PC to win an election against an elected official. I'm not saying that I wouldn't win that race, but I'm sure you can see that that would be an uphill battle and an unfair election. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts. That concludes our public comment for those that are here in person. We do have a number of public commentators who submitted via electronic. I, I can preface, if I may, just, I know that we tried to review this policy and this practice, I'm not sure that there was any substantive change, so here we are. But in any event, according to our rules and in accordance with state law, we are going to read these, these public comments aloud here, and so please, Evan, would you proceed?
First comment this morning is from Evan Brown. Subject is "No Answer." "I have been trying to reach Rick, DuPage County Board, for at least a week. I have tried emailing, messaging on Facebook, calling my district representative, and the main number. No one answers, no one replies, and no one seems to be in charge of responding to citizen requests. Why will no one pick up the phone? Does anybody work there? I'm not entirely certain that this comment will even be read by anyone." That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Mohammed Omar. Subject is "Base Pace Bus Shelters." Comment reads, "Hi, my name is Mohammed Omar, resident of DuPage. Last time I saw people standing in the cold rain and snow for the buses. I would like to see the bus shelters need to be built in the DuPage County, particularly on Roosevelt Road, specifically at Roosevelt Road and Finley Road. There is a request for streetlights need to be installed on Roosevelt Road. Thanks, Mohammed Omar." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Paula Egerton. Subject is, "Thank you, DuPage County, for your awesome online public comment system. Please have Connor McCarthy read aloud at the county board meeting." Comment reads, "I just want to say how grateful I am that DuPage County has a system that lets me say whatever I want to the whole of the county board, especially Jim Zay. Like right now, I could be in Podunk, West Virginia, and y'all wouldn't know. Right now, I'm sitting on my big old leather sofa, eating cottage cheese and mixed nuts, watching Golden Girls, and I have an outlet to say whatever I want to y'all and waste your time. The best part is, you have no clue who I even am. Maybe Paula Egerton isn't even my real name. You'll never know who the person is abusing your pathetic system. The most important thing I want to bring up today is, I truly believe Jim Zay and I have something special, and I request this next section to be read by Connor McCarthy. No one could say it better than him. Jim Zay, this next part goes out to you. Parenthetical, please read slowly and with true passion." The remainder of the comment is addressed to Jim Zay, but is a verbatim recitation of the le- The remainder of the comment is addressed to Jim Zay, but is, is a verbatim recitation of the lyrics of Someone Like You by Adele. As the county board meetings are livestreamed and posted to various online platforms for distribution, federal copyright law prevents us from reading aloud and subsequently distributing this content. A copy of the comment in its entirety has been provided to the members and will be included in the minutes of the meeting." That is the end of that comment.
Okay. If that doesn't illustrate a need to revisit the rules, I'm not sure what does.
The final comment today is from James Hayek. Uh, the subject is COVID testing and relief funds. Comment reads, "Recently, it was reported that DuPage County Board will be voting this Tuesday, eleven, January twenty twenty, on whether to use five point four million from federal COVID relief funds to expand the DuPage County courthouse. Like many working parents in DuPage County, the last few weeks and indeed much of the past year have been an exercise in frustration in childcare and schooling, in large part because required testing is either not available or very slow due to high demand. Available quick turnaround testing is key for parents to be able to work while keeping children safe in both public school and preschool. My family and I waited four hours to get tested on Friday, along with many other families. Testing lines have been hours long since after Christmas. Pop-up site fraud appears to be increasing with little enforcement. It is outrageous and disappointing that rather than expand COVID testing availability ahead of a predictable surge, that the board would choose to instead spend these funds expanding the courthouse. Please consider a more appropriate use of these funds." That is the end of that comment and that is the end of the public comments submitted online.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Evan. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori. Thank you. Our next order of business is county board and that brings us to Member Ashley Selman. Member Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR forty dash twenty-two, a resolution, a resolution to appoint Donald Whistler to the DuPage County Board of Review.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
And Shorzy? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR forty-one dash twenty-two, the appointment of Frank Covina to the Sheriff's Merrick Commission.
Leave is granted. Member Selman?
Thank you. Lastly, I move on CBR forty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution, appointment of Christopher Ketcher Rubus to the Sheriff's Merrick Commission.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Selman. On to the order of finance, Member Liz Chaplin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Members. Um, I would like to move approval of FIR zero zero two six twenty-two, acceptance and extension of time for the DuPage County Health Department Heroin Opioid Prevention and Education First Offender Court Unified for Success Court Grant in, um, uh, from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia? Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Shorzy? Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
And Zay? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR zero zero two eight twenty-two, acceptance, acceptance of the extension of the time for Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, twenty nineteen, Section six oh four B, Water Quality Management Planning Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement, uh, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Request for leave, leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR zero zero three zero twenty-two, acceptance and appropriation of the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, twenty twenty-one, BJA, FY twenty-one, DNA Capacity Enhancement for Backlog Reduction Grant, Program Grant in the Amount of three hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move, um, approval of FIR zero zero three four twenty-two, approval of the use of ARPA funds, the amount of five point four million for the Henry J. Hyde Judicial Office Facility. Oh, can I just make a comment on this?
Pardon me?
Can I just, oh, can I make a comment, please, on this?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I talked a little bit about this in county board. And, you know, Will County is paying a consultant, one point five million, to help them with their ARPA funds and come up with a plan. And our staff and this county board, um, developed our own plan and it, it's a really great, responsible, comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to commend everybody on the board, our staff, and thank Member Renahan for her leadership on this.
I'm with you.
Thank you. Okay. And then I'll move approval of FIR oh oh three five twenty-two.
Did we approve thirty-four twenty-two?
Oh, we didn't approve it yet, sorry.
So you have been a motion and a second and a request for leave, leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
I got excited there. Thank you. Okay. I move approval of FIR zero zero three five twenty-two, acceptance of the DuPage County Community Development Commission Agreement Number CD twenty-one fifteen and the amount of one million dollars for, um, air handling unit replacement.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh three six twenty-two, acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Community Black Service Grant, intergovernmental, um, intergovernmental agreement in the amount of one million ninety-three thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four three twenty-two, abatement of the Special Service Area Number, uh, thirty-one, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one Tax Levy in the amount of one million, five hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four four two-two, authorization to transfer sixteen thousand, two hundred sixty-six in budget to the county auditor for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four five twenty-two, additional appropriation for the county clerk GIS fund in the amount of one thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four six twenty-two, additional appropriation for the sale in error interest fund fiscal year twenty twenty-two, um, one hundred and ten thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four seven twenty-two, additional appropriation for the sale of error interest fund fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, seventy-one thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR oh oh four eight twenty-two, budget transfers, uh, one eleven, twenty twenty-two from various, uh, companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIP zero zero four four two-two, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to St. Reno, Romallo, and Durkin to provide professional service in collective bargaining for county board. Thank you. I move approval of, um,
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move approval of FIR, oh, FIR zero oh 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 five twenty-two, consideration in action on an ordinance of providing for the redemption and payment prior to maturity of two million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, general obligation refund bonds.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR oh zero 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 six two-two, an ordinance establishing the boundaries of, oh, no, we're not doing this one.
Yeah, so, um,
That one we need to pull.
Procedurely, we're going to take this up at a special call meeting on Friday morning?
Correct.
Yeah, so with leave of the body, we're going to take this item out of the record. Uh, no objections. Um, yes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Fine report, Member Chaplin, very fine. On to the order of environmental. Uh, Member Sheila Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, happy new year to everybody, now that we are gathering our first time in the new year. Uh, before I give my report, I would like to send a thanks to, uh, Geneva Mayor Kevin Burns and Edith Makra from the Mayors and Managers, for giving their presentation on the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region at our last environmental meeting. Basically, we are one of three areas in the country that are taking our environmental health, uh, more regional. Since we're still waiting for, um, environmental change to happen in DC, we are making it happen in a, a local level and I commend them for that. I also want to offer my apologies to Stephen Davis for my inadvertent noise during his remarks. Because my son, or my daughter and his son were Chilquier companions from elementary school on and so I'm, sorry, I stepped on his commendation of Wheatmore South Chilquier because they're awesome. So I'm going to move this morning on ENR oh oh two seven dash two-two, a resolution for the appropriation of funding for the continued operation of the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Facility in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
There's been a motion and a second. Member Chaplin, uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Rutledge?
Aye.
Shorzy? Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? And Renahan? Okay. A fine report, Member Rutledge. On to the order of ETSB, Member Greg Shorzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to offer a committee update. At our November meeting of, uh, the Emergency Telephone System Board, we unanimously, unanimously voted to replace over thirty-five hundred interoperable radios, uh, and mobile radios for every fire district, fire, uh, department and police department, including the Sheriff's Department, that fall within our jurisdiction under ETSB. Um, so approximately thirty-five hundred radios. Uh, these are replacing eleven to twelve-year-old radios, uh, that, uh, you can't find parts for, you can't get batteries for. They, uh, the warranty expired a few years ago. Uh, this is an incredible project we were able to do. Uh, we would not have been able to do this without the fantastic, um, budgeting job and the, and the wonderful stewardship of our executive director, who has been a, uh, outstanding steward of, of ETSB budget. So this is, uh, they have not been rolled out yet. They'll be rolled out in the next few months as, uh, as they are, uh, finalizing templates and everything else. But, uh, this is certainly a huge win for our, our police and our firefighters in, in, uh, in DuPage County. And it's also saving our municipalities, police departments, fire departments, sheriff's departments, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars apiece. So, uh, wonderful thing. There'll be, uh, more coming when they are finally rolled out, uh, in a few months. With that, I move to approve item ETSR zero zero six twenty-two, a resolution to adopt the Talk Group Access Agreement between the Emergency Telephone System Board of DuPage County and the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority, pending parent committee approval tomorrow.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Shorzy?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? And Rutledge?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shorzy, and thank you, uh, Deputy Johnson. On to the order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so just a brief, uh, committee side note, I'd like to share that, uh, as a result of some very strong collaboration amongst the eviction court, Prairie State Legal, our DuPage mediators, and our community services staff, notably Joan Fox and Dana Schiff. DuPage County, um, is leading in court-based rental assistance, uh, according to the IDA report put out in December. So DuPage delivered more than double the next highest county and I think something we should all be proud of. So with that, I'll move approval of HHS R thirty-seven twenty-two, recommendation for approval of a home investment partnership Act Funds Program for DuPage County Catholic Charities, tenant-based rental assistance in the amount of two hundred seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Shorzy? Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin? Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? And Pachowski? Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Member Renahan?
Thank you. Move approval of HHS R thirty-eight twenty-two, recommendation for a home investment partnership act agreement with the county and pads, uh, Project HM twenty dash four B, also tenant-based rental assistance in the amount of two hundred thousand.
There's been a motion and a second and a request for leave, leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Um, thank you. Move approval of HHSP forty dash twenty-two, a contract with Convergent Technologies to deliver material for fire panel upgrades for the care center, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, not to exceed one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. This is an ARPA item.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of HHSP forty-one twenty-two, purchase order to add the care systems for rental of medical equipment for the care center, March first, twenty twenty-two, February twenty eighth, twenty, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move
There goes Jim Zay. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so we're going to have to do a roll call.
Okay.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Shorzy? Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? And Pachowski? Great. Uh, Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of HHSP forty-two twenty-two, contract purchase order with Music Speaks LLC for music therapy for the care center, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two through January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and twelve cents.
And a motion and a second and a request for leave, leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of HHSP forty-three twenty-two, contract purchase order to Home Depot for housekeeping and cleaning supplies for the care center, January twelfth through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, not to exceed one hundred forty thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of change order, HHSP fifty-eight A dash twenty-one, amendment to HHSP fifty-eight twenty-one for Nova Staff Healthcare Services to, for supplemental nursing staff at the care center, April tenth, twenty twenty-one through April ninth, twenty twenty-two, increasing the amount by seventy-five thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of an overnight travel request for the community services manager to go to Ames, Ames, but quarterly meeting in Springfield, January nineteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-two, three hundred sixty dollars.
Second most favorable role?
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Great. And I move approval of overnight travel for the community services director to go to NACO in Washington DC, February tenth, twenty twenty-two to February sixteenth, two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars.
Leave is granted. And for the record, both of those, uh, authorizations are grant funded. Thank you very much, Member Renahan, a fine report. On to the order of judicial public safety. Member Renahan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as far as a committee, something I'd like to mention to the whole board is, um, something that was, you would not see on the agenda as, as there's no cost related. We have, uh, we had it as an informational item in JPS, uh, the first round of, of having license plate readers in the county. And it's going to be, uh, Chief Turpin, the sheriff, had worked on to get kind of a free trial going on and then something that we're going to see as going forward through procurement as it vets out. But I think something of interest as we've seen so much crime going on in the county, something that we should all be aware of, so. I will move approval of JPS R twenty-nine twenty-two, IGA with DuPage County and Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System for Service Maintenance Use of, uh, two thousand five trailer for the sheriff's office.
And a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Shorzy? Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori? Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Kuduski? LaPlante? Ozog? And Pachowski? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Renahan. Um, yeah, we have one more item here, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS oh four twenty-two, ordinance amendment to the Code of Ordinances, mending library fees and civil cases for the law library.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan, a good report. On to the order of legislative, Member Dawn Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. Greetings from the FADA Conference. FADA stands for the Public Housing and Directors Association Commissioners Conference, where we're addressing affordable housing and the path toward rehousing families in a safe, protected environment. So I'm here in San Diego. Wanted to let you know it's sunny and seventy-five today. You can probably see out the window how gorgeous it is. Um, just rubbing that in. probably see out the window how gorgeous it is. Just rubbing that in. The next legislative committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth. It'll be held at one o'clock or just as soon as the county board meeting is over. And at that meeting, a very important meeting, we will be voting to adopt DuPage County's twenty-twenty-two state legislative agenda. The Springfield session is scheduled to be abbreviated, so we're not expecting a huge number of issues to be considered, but it is important to give direction to our lobbyists in Springfield on how best to work on behalf of DuPage County. So your attendance on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, is appreciated. As an aside, I know in this time of COVID, especially the Omicron variant, travel is kind of dangerous, so I want to let the staff and my colleagues know that I plan to be COVID-tested on Friday when I return. So I will be either COVID-free and attend the committee meetings on Tuesday or not, but I wanted to let you know that I am taking personal responsibility to be tested after this trip. So thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. Very nice. A fine report. Thank you very much, Member Desart. On to the order of Public Works, Member Mary Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I move for approval of P W R zero zero three three twenty-two intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the City of Darien for reporting and meter reading for both the county and the City of Darien's water utility bimonthly readings.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pacowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. And LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of F M P zero zero three seven twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract issued to Home Depot USA, Doing Businesses Home Depot Pro, Furnishing and Delivering Housekeeping Supplies and Cleaning Chemicals as needed for the county campus for facilities management for the period January twelfth, twenty-twenty-two through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, total contract amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars.
Been a motion and a second. A request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of F M P zero zero three nine twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Royal Pipe and Supply Company to furnish and deliver plumbing supplies by the specified manufacturers at discounted rates as needed for county facilities for the period February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two through February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, for a total contract amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-eight thousand seven dollars and fifty cents per lowest responsible bid.
Second most favorable role?
Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
Thank you. I move for approval of P W P zero zero three six twenty-two recommendation for the approval of an agreement between the County of DuPage, Illinois, and Burns and McDonnell for professional rate analysis services to conduct an independent rate study for the period January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two for Public Works for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand one hundred dollars.
Second most favorable role?
Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
And finally, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of P W P zero zero three eight twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Core in Maine for meters installation, AMI system and infrastructure for Public Works for the period January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, for a total contract amount not to exceed one million seven hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars.
Leave is granted.
Okay.
Thank you very much. A fine report. On to the order of transportation, and that means, Member Don Pacowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Under committee update, I just want to thank Chris Snyder and our staff. You can always tell when it snows, whether you're on a county road or any other road, and our guys do a great job. We have a very dedicated staff, and I appreciate the good work they do, and they appreciate that we respect and appreciate the work they do. So thank you. That being said, I would approve, I move to approve D T R thirty-two thirty-two, a local public agency agreement between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation through Sixty-third Street at Main Street for an estimated county cost of sixty thousand two hundred and three dollars.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pacowski?
Thank you. Move to approve D T R thirty-nine twenty-two, a local public agency agreement between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation to approve Hobson Road, Sixty-third Street Sidewalk Section for an estimated county cost of three hundred thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve D T R three fifteen eight twenty-one amendment to a resolution issued to Florida Construction for DuPage County Campus Ring Road to increase the funding twelve thousand sixty-one dollars, resulting in a amended contract of nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve amendment to D T R two two nine eight twenty-one amendment to a resolution for an agreement between the County of DuPage and Progressive Rail Incorporated for railroad crossing improvements at York Road between Seaver Court and Foster Avenue to increase the funding five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents, decrease resulting in an amended county cost of thirty-six thousand thirty dollars and sixty-two cents.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve amendment, D T R oh four oh five B nineteen amendment to a resolution for a local public agency agreement, number one, for federal participation between the County of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation, Gary Avenue, Great Western Trail, St. Charles Road, Amity Road Section for the shared county cost of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Roll call?
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Roll call, please?
Pardon me?
Roll call on that item, please?
Oh, okay. Any requests for roll calls? Always in order. There's a motion and a second?
And can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. I just want to renew the concern that I had in finance about the approval. This went from a hundred and ninety-two thousand to almost seven hundred thousand without any report to Transportation Committee or Finance or any other, you know, county board entity. So I just have some concern with the sixty-one point five percent increase. We all like our trails, but I think at some point, some accountability toward the board should be asked before bike checks authorized and works performed.
Okay, any further discussion on this issue? There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry, who was the second on that motion? Okay. Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Okay, Member Pacowski?
Thank you. Move to approve D T P twenty-nine twenty-two recommendation approval of contract purchase order to Arians Company to furnish another two Gravely EV Series Motors Department Division of Transportation for total cost not to exceed sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk. Is there a request for leave? We've got to do a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Absolutely.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pacowski?
Thank you. Move to approve D T P thirty-two twenty-two recommendation approval of contract to C D M Smith, Inc., for professional engineering service for Cass Avenue Corridor Study, not to exceed two hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve D T P thirty-one twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract agreement to Les Tischman, Vascala, and Lampel for LLC to provide professional legal service to negotiate highway authority agreement applications as needed, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve D T P thirty-two thirty-two recommendation for approval of contract agreement to Les Tischman, Vascala, and Lampel LLC to provide professional legal service to assist with environmental issues as needed for a contract not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Pacowski?
Move to approve D T P thirty-three twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract with Baxter Woodman, Inc., for professional design engineering service, prime request of division of transportation, not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve D T P thirty-four twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract of a local public agency engineering service agreement between the County of DuPage and H R Green for professional construction engineering service in connection with the installation of new sidewalks along Hobson, Sixty-third Street, from Woodbridge Avenue to James Avenue for a contract not to exceed two hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Leave is granted.
And last, Mr. Chairman, move to approve D T P thirty-five twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract to Singh and Associates, Inc., for professional traffic design engineering services, prime request of division of transportation, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Pacowski. A fine report. That concludes our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled Old Business. Old Business. We have Member Ozog, followed by Member Chaplin, followed by, what are you seeking? No, Ozog Chaplin. Please proceed, Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mentioned this last week, but I want to again thank Chief Judge Popejoy for the presentations that were given to us about the expansion at the courthouse. I think that it was really a great precedent to set before such a large amount of money is approved for a project, and I felt like we were really well-informed, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. So just a couple of things. Mostly, I know we don't normally respond to public comment, but I know we normally don't respond to public comment, but I did want to just make a couple of comments on public comment and public comment. First of all, your mention about our board rules, right? So we did, we did go over the public comment section during our Rules Committee, and I know a couple of us did want to amend the rules regarding public comment about the online public comment. And I think, Connor, are you working on something with the board rules, or have you looked at that, or, because I know some of the members expressed concern about what took place at our last meeting and how to prevent that type of comment, you know, from happening again. So were you, I was told staff was looking into this.
I don't know why you can prevent it. I just think it's how we receive it that we can control.
But should comments be read that are relevant to our meetings?
Well, who's going to decide what's relevant?
Well, I know. It's very, I know it's a slippery slope, but, you know, we, that person that commented today, whoever it was, I mean, made a very good point about how really out of line our comments can get. So just something to maybe consider about, what was that, Jim?
Hi, you gonna make him repeat it?
I know.
I have no idea who that was, and I thought I was too sensitive to even bring the Golden Girls up when Betty White passed away the last couple of weeks ago.
So, but just something, you know.
I have no idea who it is.
I don't think they should be given a platform to be read aloud in a meeting. I think you can refer them to the minutes of the meeting, and that's sufficient.
I agree with you. I agree with you. That's.
Let's call on Member Selman. She's, has a responsibility in this area, and she, so please, Member Selman.
Thank you. So we did have a lot of discussion about public comment in this committee, and the, you know, the argument for limiting these sort of comments, unfortunately, we don't have the legal backing, and Connor, I think, explained that pretty well in our meetings. We can ask for a name, but they don't have to be truthful with us, and that's exactly the case. If they come in in person, we can ask for address and all those other things, but they don't have to provide us. So the value argument, then, is do we want to make rules for bad actors, or do we want to make rules that are transparent and allow people to participate in our process? That's where we concluded in the committee, and that's what was passed by this full board. Actually, I really want to commend Dana. I, this was the first week that we, you know, these rules had been passed, and so we got this packet. I thought we got it in a lot of time to read it ahead of time. I certainly, I guess, be open to discussing whether or not they all need to be read, but I think it goes back to the comment you made, Mr. Chairman, about how do we decide which comment has value? Clearly, I think they were trying to make a point, and it's, it's someone known to us who in the world watches these board meetings closely enough to be able to make that many absurd jokes. Clearly, if someone, someone here knows whether they told us they were doing that sort of comment or not, you know, it's, we don't know that, of course, but I think it's up to us, especially as we enter this campaign season this year, to tell our volunteers that we don't find that helpful. What we find helpful are comments like the pace comment we had today. I think that was awesome, and that I would think that that person maybe wouldn't have had the opportunity to come tell us that if we required them to come in person. So I'm happy to discuss it, but please just know this policy came through weeks of discussion in committee and a lot of discussion with the State's Attorney's Office about what we could require, and probably more, as was the conclusion, most of the case, what we could not require because of people's rights. So, thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, and forgive me, I, I know that there was a real sincere effort to scrutinize, and I know it's, it's complicated because there's constitutional rights, open meetings,